Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Town of Georgetown Select Board Meeting. We'll call this meeting to order at 7:01 and I would like to remind everybody that the meetings being taped and it will be on our YouTube channel. Is there any public comment? I do not see any. Are there any, or is this you or me? It doesn't really matter. Any items to be added to the agenda?
Wow.
Oh, we're gonna mute that real quick. Perfect. The only thing that I'd mention here, and it's not an addition, it's more of a deletion under the annual appointments. I had listed Alexandra Kelly as Registrar of Voters and actually in statute, that's done every two years in January of the odd year. So Alex has already covered on that one. So when we get there, we'll just be skipping it.
Cool. Sounds good.
All right. So the next item of business, and just for folks to know, we do have Philip Davis here from Sagittawatch County EMA. He will be giving us a presentation at about 7:15. In the meantime, however, we will be focusing on the organization of the board and our annual housekeeping for the ensuing year. The first item is to elect a Chair of our Select Board.
Yeah, well, somebody.
I'm up for it if you guys want me there.
Yeah. And Bronwyn is muted.
Because yeah. Do it for all of her.
All right. Now, if John is willing to continue as Chair, I would like to nominate him for that position. And I'm sure that Aria and I are happy to offer assistance in any areas where you wish to delegate or designate.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote.
I vote for myself.
You can.
Sure.
Oh, perfect. And the next item of business is to set the meeting schedule for the ensuing year. So the last couple of meetings, we had set a, tried an earlier six o'clock start. Historically, the board has met the second and fourth Tuesdays at 7:00 PM. But it's a new board, new stuff, so we just have to set our recurring times.
The six was working better for me. I liked the six o'clock better. I mean, that's, I, it just works better for me. I, you know, so.
I really don't, I really prefer seven or five. Six is a miserable time for me. But if that's the will of the board, I will show up.
Five, five, five doesn't work for me because of work. I mean, I'm usually doing stuff, you know, late, so that just, that gets me a little tighter on that one.
I can be flexible. I can be flexible, so I'll.
We can't, we can't switch around. We've got to choose. I mean, you know, it's not fair to the staff and the public not to just be consistent, so. What is your schedule at work?
I, I can do six or I could do seven. So either one works for me. And so I'm, I'm happy to to, to participate at either time.
Planning Board, seven? Yes. So, well.
If I, if I may, Tyler's here all day.
That's the other thing.
Sending that out to seven because, you know.
Well, Tyler could come in at, at 11 instead of nine. I mean, that's also flexible.
And it's true. And I, I, as much as I love getting home before the sun is down, I don't, that's not going to happen in the winter anyway. So, you know, I can be flexible. Seven o'clock works and, you know, if we get to summer next year and we feel like the budget season, you know, we want to shift. But seven works for me too.
No, if I gotta come in tomorrow for seven, I guess I can work around. I, I'll have to, I'll deal with it.
Well, okay.
Seven on the.
I have a committee, I have one committee that meets at 6:30 and the others meet at seven. So it's a kind of a toss-up, but twice, twice a month at six was a real issue for me. If we wanted to change it in the wintertime when it gets dark sooner, that's another possibility.
I think we should revisit it then in the winter. I think that's a good, that's a good compromise.
So are we thinking 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Tuesday?
Yes. Might as well stick with the Tuesdays.
Yep. Do we want to make a motion to that effect?
Sure. I move that we retain the schedule for 7:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
No.
Excuse me, Tuesdays, that's, sorry, different Thursday. Tuesdays, I don't, I don't want to make you come twice a week, sorry. The second Tuesday of each month, retain that schedule.
And the fourth.
And the fourth.
Perfect.
That's my motion.
Seconded.
I'll second it.
Perfect by John.
Agreed.
All in favor?
Yep.
Perfect, three to oh. All right. And the next item of business in your packet, there was a tracker of different liaisons to be appointed. And if the board is amenable, I think it would make sense just to work down from the top to the bottom with one addition at the very bottom of the Shellfish Conservation Committee.
Commission.
Commission. Yes.
Um. I, I think John has, you know, I'd welcome input as to where you'd like to, to have people.
Well, you seem to be doing, Bronwyn, you seem to be doing real well with personnel.
I'd like to stick with personnel. I have some goals for the year in that area.
Sounds good. Would you be willing to do legal?
I can do legal. Yes. I'd love to play swap with you if I can take rec from you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Let's start.
And so, so Aria is going to take legal, Bronwyn is at personnel. In terms of the fire department, I believe Mary had been tasked as that liaison in the last year.
So how, yeah. Can you continue that?
Sure.
I mean.
I mean, we asked it, yeah, I can certainly do that. And, you know, and I think we've asked Brian to come into the board, you know, once a month or so, and as long as he's willing to do that, absolutely.
Cool.
And I'll continue that. Okay.
And on the committees and commissions, the Board of Appeals.
I can handle that. I mean, I've served more recent, most recently as its Chair. But if somebody else, if you'd like somebody else to do that, that's.
The Board of Appeals really hasn't even done much?
Well, we had a hearing. I, I was appointed to their board and like three, maybe three weeks later, we had a two-day hearing. And that was the last thing. We, we've had a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
Um, we have two vacancies we have to address.
We do have some people who've expressed interest in those vacancies, but we don't have, I don't think, I'm not prepared to recommend appointments tonight, but we have a couple of people who are interested.
Yes.
And they meet whenever there's a need to meet and otherwise they don't meet. So if we don't have anything where anybody's thinking of suing us or disputing a decision, it's nice that they're not meeting.
Right. The last, what, what Ole had been doing prior to me taking over was just having a very brief meeting in every January. Just a regroup meeting. And so, but that was very cer- very short. So I think it's.
There'll need to be a meeting. Eventually, there'll need to be a meeting to elect a new Chair.
Right.
But since we don't have a full committee yet, that's probably premature too.
Yes.
And it does, it sounds like the only person that is eager to continue in that role was Aria. Is that correct?
I'm not eager to do it, no.
If you're, if you're.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do it and that it's something I'm more familiar with than, let's say, you know, probably Harbor Committee, for instance.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
The next up was the Cemetery District Trustees. Has there been a Select Board?
That's me. Perfect. I'm okay with that. Cause that's.
Great.
Perfect.
I've done conservation and I'm, I'm happy to continue.
All right. FAC is the full Select Board typically.
Okay. Um, I've had the Harbor Committee, but if anybody's dying to take it over, I would, I would consider trading.
How often do they meet?
Irregularly. Their ordinance, I believe, says they're supposed to meet at least six times a year. They basically meet when the Harbor Master suggests it.
Sure.
That's been the pattern.
I'm happy to, happy to take them. It's Woody and Frank and Peter and some others. So yeah, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Aria. And next up is the Planning Board. And John would like to do that. All right.
Your wish is our command. It's double duty, you know.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I noticed that.
Every Tuesday, right? No, no, they meet on Wednesdays.
And they're even meeting on a federal holiday because they're that dedicated to a cause, John.
And what's good about it is if I'm on appeals and you're on Planning Board, then it's not one person on them, on, on both of them. You know, it brings in a couple of different perspectives on, on an issue besides our CEO.
And I believe, Aria, you wanted to keep rec?
I do. And yes, I wrote my name in there. John gave it to me.
And School Committee, is that?
Usually, well, it's always been the three, but it doesn't, you know. I, I'd love to take the School Committee since I go to those meetings anyway, but I don't know if you, I don't know if that was you or if that was Rich.
It wasn't either. It was supposedly all three. And then it was a question of who, who went to a meeting, which frankly, I, I never did. They were at awkward times and Rich got, went quite often, I believe.
I think I've seen, I've followed a couple of them.
Yeah.
Zoom, Zoom wise.
So are we thinking the full board still and you'll be our most frequent reporter?
Sure. I mean, I'm already going.
Makes sense. Yeah.
So all of us, good to know.
All right. Next up would be the Solid Waste Committee. Solid Waste Management Committee.
Yeah. I'll keep that one unless somebody has a desperate desire.
Not particularly.
TOPMB.
Oh, I can do that one, John?
Excellent. Excellent. They'll be very happy, John.
Yeah.
So I've sent in on a bunch of them.
I think you're better suited than, for instance, me.
This is a full week for you, John. They're meeting Thursday too.
I just saw that too.
I'm just here with the good news.
His voice is getting quieter as this meeting goes on. They probably won't be for the rest of the summer once. We appreciate it. Pretty good.
And the last one that we have to address is the Shellfish Conservation Commission.
That was me and I don't have any issues with that.
Perfect.
Cause I don't have any meetings till September now with that one.
Okay.
So for Personnel, we had Bronwyn, Legal is Aria, Mary at the Fire Department, Board of Appeals is Aria, Cemetery is John, Conservation Commission is Bronwyn, FAC and School Committee are the full Select Board, Aria will be the Liaison to Harbor, John to the Planning Board, Recreation is with Aria, Solid Waste at Bronwyn, TOPMB and Shellfish to John. Can we have a motion to move the slate?
I'd move that we accept the slate and approve the slate of these Committee Liaison positions.
I'll second it.
Perfect. Three to oh. And the last item of the organization of the board and annual housekeeping is the, some policy affirmations. Last year at the organizational meeting, on one single motion, the board voted to reaffirm the policies governing the collection of oldest tax balances first, the allowing of the signing of warrants outside of a scheduled meeting, and continuing the remote meeting policy. So this wasn't like all of our policies on the books just wants to keep things in.
I'd move to accept the, and retain the current policy affirmations.
Thank you. Aria, John?
All in favor?
Perfect. Three to zero. And with that, we are at 7:14 on the dot. Philip Mason, are you ready to come on up? And what I would recommend, if you want to take that seat and we'll all kind of get closer together, so you are visible. And just for the audience at home and Bronwyn, we do have Mike McDermott as well in the audience, our new Emergency Management Director. So he is here for this critical conversation with the county.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me. So I just wanted to share some information with you guys as, as one of the new Emergency Management Court Directors here. I have been with Sagittawatch County for the last four months. I do come from Iowa. And one of the first projects that we were tasked with was actually taking a look at our mass notification system. So we have decided at the county level that we could better utilize our mass notification system. So we have decided that we want to move away from our old system, which is the Code Red system. With the new system, which is called RAVE, we are asking the residents to re-sign up for the RAVE Alert Platform. Reasoning is, is we cannot gather the information just due to privacy issues from Code Red over to the RAVE system. But there are several benefits that come with, coming with the new system where the local towns are going to have the access to be able to send their own emergency alerting. I know that Georgetown is affected by 127 being blocked a lot. So we can actually get those notifications out to the Georgetown residents when that is, when that is. Another example that we use is when a cooling center is open, you know, especially with this hot weather. If the community center decided that they were going to open up as a cooling shelter or a warming shelter or a warming center, then they would be, we would be able to send out that alert through the town. The town offices are able to send those and also the local emergency management. What we really see, a lot of benefit to, to the platform, it gives their continuity of operations because we're using one platform throughout the entire county. But each of the towns has their own access that they're able to send out that local information as well. It's real-time information. So as soon as you press go, it's within a few seconds that the residents are actually getting that alert that is being sent out. So really, one of the other key benefits that we're seeing is, and we've seen a lot of people that have pre-signed up for the alerting. We have a lot that are living in other jurisdictions, but then are able to actually subscribe to your information as well. So where that comes into a huge benefit is especially those residents who might live here in Georgetown, but go to work in Bath. They're able to sign up and receive both of those emergency alerting systems. So they're getting that important information and carrying that through for real public safety. We will be sending out anything that is life safety, property safety issues. The National Weather Service sends out targeted alerts. So what that means is if the National Weather Service sends out an alert, for example, coastal flooding, if you are within the area of polygons that the National Weather Service has issued that alert, by use, putting your information in, if your address, you will be targeted through that address alerting. So the, the hope is to reduce the, what we call alert fatigue. And that will change the landscape of when, when your phone goes off for an alert, you're getting information that is important and directed to you. So a lot of this is local control and local access. You can sign up for whatever alerts you wish to receive and whichever alerts you don't want to receive. So it's, it's a great tool, so.
And the town, just in some of our conversations that we've had, the town, if we were to have, say, a special town meeting on a Saturday to address whatever, we actually could use that system to get that alert out. And it actually pings onto a multitude of fronts. So it touches Facebook, touches email, touches text, touches call, and able to make sure it's a uniform standard message coming from either the county or us. And in the event that we end up with a power outage, which happens quite often in Georgetown, we can get on the horn to our friends at Sagittawatch EMA. And if we can't get the message out, they can get it out for us. So.
Is it something that could be utilized? We're, we're changing culverts, replacing culverts on one of the town roads as a, so something like that, just as a awareness, the road might be blocked for 15, 20 minutes.
Absolutely.
Cool. No, that's.
Absolutely. So we encourage everybody to sign up and we encourage everybody to really sign up themselves because there is so much information that is actually collected and available for us to prepare for. They talked about the big hurricane season this year and there are some questions that you get asked during the registration and everything that put attention to evacuation, whether you have access to transportation. We're able to actually target specific what we call query information. So we're able to actually target those specific residents who may need some additional assistance. And where that really is beneficial is where our emergency responders come into play. Then they are able to actually provide the assistance to the direct, you know, if, if somebody's needing extra assistance, getting out, we're able to target them specifically. So we, we find a huge benefit to it. And really just streamlining processes straight across the board where the town, the town of Georgetown is able to actually send out their own alerting before there used to be a process that people would have to go through to even get out an alert. Now the town of Georgetown has access to this platform at no cost to you guys. It's just a, you guys are be, being offered this platform to use if you choose. So.
Sounds good. I like it.
Yeah, for sure.
So these are all listed on our, I will leave signup sheets with Tyler. It does have a QR code. The QR code takes them directly to the signup page. Otherwise, the website is listed there. Our website does have the link to actually sign up and everything, but everybody's encouraged to sign up. They can always call our office and we're, we've been walking people through the steps to actually get signed up and everything. So.
Thank you, Philip.
Yeah.
And, and just to really underscore this past year, I think we all learned that communication during a crisis is something that you want to have planned out well ahead. And I think we're all thankful that you guys at EMA are working on that.
Yes. And so this system does take effect July 1st. We are continuing to use our Code Red system until July 1st. There will be another reminder message to residents who are signed up for Code Red currently that we are switching. That will come at the very last week of, of June. Just letting them know they will no longer receive alerts unless they have signed up for the new system. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
And thank you for making the drive down.
No, absolutely.
All the way over from Iowa.
Though I think it's a little cooler here than Bath right now.
Just a little, yes.
And to get back on to the agenda, the next item of business with the minutes of the May 28th meeting for your review and approval.
Move to approve?
All right.
I'll second it.
All right.
I have to abstain.
All in favor? Two to zero to one abstention. Perfect. Thank you. You were provided by, by email from Mary, the May financials and the hauling numbers. And under assessing items, we put a placeholder of personal property declarations received. However, in the last two and a half weeks, we've received no new ones. So I think we're towards the tail end of those. In your packet for correspondence, and if at any point you have a question, you know, just flag it. We had the Certified Ratio Declaration Approval for Maine Revenue Services. A couple of meetings ago, we certified higher than their projected ratio. So over the course of our commit, yes, Bronwyn?
Well, in this letter, it says that our request has been certified at 100% for commitment April 1st. Now, April 1st is already gone.
That is for the tax year. The tax years kickoff on the April 1st.
Right. But I'm just, the second paragraph is a however. And then the third paragraph of another sort of however, if your value, taxable value cannot be implemented and goals are not met. What does that mean by when, I mean, because we don't have the assessor's report, we haven't.
What it, what it comes down to, Bronwyn, is that when we get to commitment and we go through the work of the statistical revaluation, that will be the work that needs to get done to certify at 100%. And Bill Van Tynen is very confident that we can get there.
So that, so that deadline is essentially whenever we are able to commit the tax rate.
Yes. And we learned this year, just for our own inner computer software, it is well going to be done before the end of the year because the software and the computer doesn't always make that easy. But this is something that it's good that we got the approval back that yes, they know we're working on it. And it's something that I think will take care of itself in the, in the course over the summer and early fall.
Okay. Thank you.
And in your packet, there was also a letter from the Maine Department of Agriculture Land Remains Future Program about, they have a program underway where they're looking to acquire properties in the state. And Stage Island in Georgetown off of Kennebec Point has been selected as a finalist in their applications. There are a host of awesome reasons why Stage Island is a jewel that wants to be conserved. And I just wanted to make sure the board was fully aware that this is coming. In your emails, I sent along a very interesting application packet that gets into 10,000 years of history at points on the Wabanaki connections to Stage Island. And I just, the nerve in me was elbows deep in it and realized I had other things to get to that day. But I will keep folks updated as this progresses. One thing just to flag, however, is that should the state acquire Stage Island? That is another property that we have that currently is on the tax rolls that ultimately would not be. Now, it is an open space. It's a lower rate anyway. The impact will be really negligible on the overall tax burden, but it is something to follow because as more land goes that route, you know, but there are benefits to it. So also in your packet.
Tyler, I just wanted to say I appreciated all the information. I read it as well. So I, thank you.
Hey, thank you. And in your packet, there was also a project agreement email for work, the fund the work at the Flying Point Road through KELP. This is something that Ruth Endrick will actually be coming to speak to the board, either at our next meeting or the following one, schedules permitting. I included the draft of the agreement that really just needs a signature from the town to say we're comfortable. But my understanding is that there will be minor tweaks that I can't really speak to tonight, but I know Ruth could when she's here. So I just wanted to flag that it is upcoming and I'd say before the next meeting, you know, perhaps read through it. So we're, you know, all on the same page there. And the last bit of correspondence that I included in your packet came from some folks down at the end of Bay Point. And it was Allison Lubin that started the discussion. She spoke with several of her neighbors. And we've heard from them about a streetlight at the terminus of the road that gets quite annoying for all of the residents at night and apparently can attract a host of insects as well that are not always fun. I do know that I've spoken with John a little bit about this. The the streetlight has a benefit during winter in particular to make it easier for plowing. However, during the summer, it used to be there to light up a wharf that is no longer there, is my understanding. If the board was ever amenable, I would be willing to look to CMP if they're, if they'd be interested in a potential shut it off for a season and potentially turn it back on. But I just wanted to make sure at the very least folks are reaching out about a streetlight and wanted to pass along the good news.
I think it's different than what I thought. If it's on town landing roads down at the end of town landings, that'd be down below, back down around, I believe. So it's a different one than the one up on top, I think. I'm not positive. I'd have to.
I would be interested, John, if you go down to take a look to go with you because I did go down that day because I found it really helps to lay eyes when folks are raising a concern to understand it. So just something on the radar and that the board may want to look into.
We'd probably go to listen to CMP, Bronwyn. You have Bronwyn?
Well, we changed over to LED lights, right?
Yes.
Has that changed the character of some of the, the streetlights? We had a complaint also from Lisa Reese at quite some time ago over at Riggs, the area of, the Riggs area about a streetlight there that is at the, an intersect, well, it's not really an intersection, it's a turnoff, which it's not at the intersection, if it's the light I saw when I went down there. But that's another, lights at night can be very annoying and especially can seem unnecessary. I understand about plowing and if there's a wharf in question, what is the, what control do we have? We pay for these streetlights. Do we, can they be adjusted to give out less light or to come on and off at certain times?
I would be happy if the board gives me the direction to, to inquire on what steps could be taken. I do know they could shut the light off. I don't know about intensity and I know they could flip the light back on at a certain point as well.
Can we, is it okay if we ask Suzie which light it is? She should, she'll know.
Hey, I would be more than happy.
Yep.
Which light, is it, is it the one up at the top of the hill at the intersection or is it down?
No, it's at the bottom. It's between Breton's house and what used to be Tibbetts. And it was put in there originally because the Tibbetts lost their daughter. So a very long time ago and Joni wouldn't let anybody take it out. And it's, so it's been a very long time, forty years. And a lot of times, we've had a lot of complaints down there about that light because you can't see the night sky. And in fact, the plowing doesn't happen down there during the nighttime, so.
I don't think we even plow that part of the road anymore, actually.
Right, I know. There was a push a few, I don't know, fifteen years ago to stop doing that and. And there were private people who were plowing it, but when I heard about this, I remember that we've had it, I think it's in your notes from. Probably ten years ago and twenty years ago and thirty years ago that we've talked about this and it is the one there at the bottom.
Okay.
Thank you.
So would it be, would, would it be appropriate to explore uh, simply eliminating that light?
I think so.
I, yes, and it would save the town money in the long run.
Exactly.
Right, I think the neighborhood would like that and I think you could probably poll the neighborhood, but this is a neighbor who's asking and. I know that when Breton and I redid the house, we took the window out on that side because. It just lit up the house all night long, so it's been an issue for thirty five years.
Well, I'd move to uh, authorize Tyler for you to explore removal of the light.
Second it. Alright, John. Perfect. I will get on that. And on your agenda, as I'm just making notes. There were no other items of correspondence in our continuing items. We had one, the Georgetown Community Center has had their pumping. And that has been recorded here at the office. And I would turn this over to our committee updates. And I recognize some folks are new liaisons as well, so. As much information as folks want to share or as little as you are able to share.
I have nothing to, to share at this point in time. It seems like we were all just together just the other day.
Absolutely.
Pretty much. Yeah, the only, the only thing I did was went to the rep committee meeting. And you had your June jam. And. The fall frolic planning is still going on. That's, that was all I had from that particular meeting.
It's a combined art show and fall frolic again.
I do have one question. I had a big, long message today from the Working League about their float in the July fourth parade. Um, so who is sponsoring the July fourth parade?
So.
The GCC?
Okay, okay, good. I just hadn't heard about it anyplace else.
It's coming up on you.
Uh, there will be a little bit coming up in new business about that. It's a newer item.
Yeah, okay.
And were there any board member updates, things that they wanted to share? This is typically the spot where, anything new?
We're replacing culverts on March. I mean, that's about the only thing I have going right now.
Alright.
Hopefully we'll be done with that tomorrow.
And those are the ones that were damaged in the May of twenty three, twenty three storm, correct?
I believe so, yes. The big dip in the, the big. Wallow out in the road there, yes.
Good.
Uh, new principal's been hired at the school, Caitlin Bueker. So uh, Beaker, Bleaker, anyway, I'm probably.
BD?
BD, anyway.
It doesn't matter.
Somebody can put it uh. Yes, somebody can put it in the chat and uh, so she'll be starting in July and um. And we, those of us who were at the school board meeting met her. Uh, she seems very competent and Brian is putting into the chat. Thank you, Brian. The uh, fire department opened house on July seventh. Caitlin Beatty, thank you. You got it, Mary. You should have. Should have been a contest for that.
And I did connect with the superintendent of schools on Saturday to get the contact information and we would like. At a future meeting at their leisure over the course of the summer to get. The new principal in to meet the select board and, you know, recognize we're all rowing in the same direction, so. And with that, are there any more board member updates?
Not for me.
Not for me.
So I will jump into my town administrator update real quick. So I want to just first note that our last select board meeting did not actually get recorded. I failed to hit that button, so if you go to YouTube looking for the last select board meeting, it's not there. It's recording now. I also wanted to let the board know that the working waterfront resiliency application has been submitted. And I just wanted to give thanks to Stephen Mace, Mary and Representative Allison Hepler for really helping strengthen our application. There were some good particulars. That I think are going to help us rise. I did hear today from MMA that over seventy applications have been submitted. For this first round, but they'll be working through those and I expect. End of July-ish, they can start awarding monies. And on Thursday.
Thank you for doing that.
Hey, thank you. On Thursday, we had the Robin Hood Road Culvert meeting. We had a good turnout, I'd say about ten to twelve people on Robin Hood Road. John was there, Chief Whalen, our engineer and Lisa Reese. And she actually brought up that. Anyways, I'm not going down the telephonic line again. So I just want to point out that the project will actually kickoff in early September. We have heard from the engineer that one lane will always remain open. There were concerns from the public raised about that as sometime where. Boats will be getting hauled out of Robin Hood. We also heard from Brian that, you know, we want to make sure the width of that lane is. Big enough for emergency vehicles to get through. Our engineer is pretty confident that both of those. Requests can be accommodated. It is worth noting though that there will be at most a handful of twenty minute intervals. While they're physically placing the culverts with the crane, that folks might have to wait on Robin Hood. And. So yeah, that was there. Were there any questions about that meeting?
No, I didn't, I did run into Neil Collins, the guy who runs the place, runs the, the thing and I, he thought. He had the piece of paper and he had the wrong date in his mind and he, or he would have been there, but I let him know what was going on. So he's aware of everything at this point.
Thank you, John. And I wanted to also just note that town meeting this past weekend in my book was a success. And I would just ask that members of the board reach out to me directly with any feedback, good, bad and in between, so. While it's fresh in mind, we can make notes to improve for next year because we can always make things better. I wanted to let folks know that I will be taking a vacation day on Thursday, but I will have my cell phone if anybody needs me. I check my emails while I'm out, but definitely text me because I will be out fishing. And on Monday at ten AM, I will be at Georgetown Volunteer Fire Department with Mike McDermid and a. Stephen Mace and a host of folks from FEMA that is really starting some of the. And I don't want to say initial because there have been many initial meetings with FEMA, but in terms of. Quantifying damages and getting monies, this is a very important meeting and we're very gracious that the. Fire department offered up their meeting room because the amount of people, it would be too big for our conference room here. Were there any questions on any of the things I brought up? I kind of went through rapid fire.
I will say that some of the feedback I got uh, about town meeting was um, that they liked that, that uh. You recognize some of the volunteers in the community, so that was nice uh, to do that this, this first time. Maybe y'all used to do it many years ago, but I don't remember it for. For years past and uh, so that was a nice, that was a nice touch. Um, it's some of the feedback I got.
Thank you. And thank you Bronwyn for really helping make sure that we got those recognitions onto the. In front of our moderator to make it happen. That was a really good idea, so thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. My feedback about the, I, I was thinking about this the other day. I think that maybe we should spend some time at a meeting talking about our goals for this year. And perhaps put on that list, um, actual creation of a town report. I would love to see a town report that was ready at the town meeting. And then in that report, you could list these committees and, and you wouldn't have to read everybody's name. You could ask everyone to stand. Who was serving on a committee. I think the format that we saw from, from the other applicant that we interviewed for Tyler's job. Um, that she was using in a New Hampshire town would be much easier to produce than what we previously have tried to do. Would require less lead time to get it printed and could use materials that were already. Um, ready. The warrant itself, which is always a problem to have that ready for the, for the actual current report. That could be still printed on an insert. It, it could still be printed on regular paper like we've been doing. But it would just be great to have a report. I think there's a statute that requires us to have a report, but we're about, what, five years out of. Think. And they, we used to be asked about a year after the fact, committee chairs would be asked to write their report. Um, so it wasn't very timely and you had to go back through minutes and try to figure out what you did. As opposed to be coming to the end of the, uh, the year and wanting to share the accomplishments of your committee. Or the problems that you'd encountered. So that's just a thought for the future, not really a comment about this meeting, but. It seemed like a good place to share it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bronwyn.
Happy to help.
And I just want to flag that the town report is on our radar and I, this. The next town report will be a multi-year endeavor to get us caught up in compliant with statute. And then it will be a much easier smooth sailing after that, so. Thank you Bronwyn. And with that, I would turn this over to our finance director for her update.
Good. Um, just a couple of things, little things tonight. Um, as you know, as most of you know, um, we've been waiting and waiting for our audit. Um, our audit arrived last week, right before town meeting and, you know, all that stuff that had to be done. Um, so I have been reviewing that. I have a, a telecon meeting or a Zoom uh. Meeting uh, with the auditors on Thursday afternoon, um, so uh, they can help me tie out. It's just a different way of them presenting it. They have, are not presenting the financials the way Purdy Powers used to. Um, I used to back right into the numbers, um, and I'm having some, I'm struggling pretty much, I believe because of the school numbers that are incorporated now with mine. So, um, so I'm working on that. Um, we did receive or we have, or are going to receive some money. From FEMA and from the state of Vane regarding the May twenty twenty three, uh, yeah, May twenty twenty three storm. Um, so we're looking at that as well right now to, to figure out what still needs to be done. Um, I will be taking a class all day on Thursday. Um, when I'm not in the class, I'm going to be meeting with the auditors. It's one that MMA is putting on from the uh, finance directors. It's gonna, some of it is just gonna be. Um, junk that I really don't need, but they, but they're doing a good update on the Pay Family Medical Leave Act. And a couple of other things that are on the horizon, so um, I thought I should go to that. I'm reviewing um, the financials currently right now. I, I did them right before town meeting, just so that I go into town meeting prepared where they are. Um, just to see what's out there um, that we may need to um, be accruing for or whatnot. Um, and then uh, the fire department is having their open house on, uh, which Brian I think just put in the chat anyway, it's on my list. Um, on July seventh from eleven, I believe it's eleven to two. Um, and then um, the Fourth of July parade. Uh, is at the community center, which, which is on your agenda to um, requesting the road closure. And then on the last thing, I'll just be adjusting um, salaries based on what was passed at town meeting. As far as I know, that's how the board wants me to head with that, so um, and I think that's it. I don't think I have anything else.
And you're still looking for a call for floats and volunteers for the parade, is that correct?
Yeah, we've got, I think we've got eight or nine floats at this point. Um, without fire trucks and without the sheriff and all that stuff, so. You know, um, we've got someone going up to the legion to see about a color guard, but color guard's been tough. The legions, a lot of their folks are aging out as well. Um, and they do that parade, you know, at, for the bath, you know, the bath parade. Um, so it's usually that's about all those folks can take, so we'll see if we can get a color guard. Um, our, our Boston Post Kane holder is very excited to be asked to be in the parade. Um, so hopefully we'll have one, an old vehicle in which room to ride along, so. So we've got notes out to a few. Um, Citizen of the Year, Roger Bogart is also looking to see what his schedule's like to see if he can make that as well, but normally though, we have those folks in the. In the parade in a vehicle or, or something. Um, we, I believe we have some magnetic um, things that adhere to the cars, so identifying them, so. Yeah, so that was it. That was it for me, I think.
Salaries would be adjusted as of July first?
Correct.
Okay.
That was my, that was my understanding and how we put it in budget, so I assumed that's what you wanted, yes.
Alright, thank you, Mary. So now we've made it on to old business and in your packet was. A draft fee schedule that I had put together some months ago and I wanted us just to touch base about the fee schedule. Our ordinances that changed at town meeting have now made all fees in town the prerogative of the select board. And each ordinance is a little bit different, but effectively we look to get some buy-in from the committees, touch base. Have a public hearing where the public can come in and express themselves. We're not looking for a vote tonight on fee schedules. These fees were all of the ones that were in the ordinances prior to being removed. I believe there's been some discussion about at our next meeting, passing our fee schedule tentatively. So when the new fiscal year kicks in, we can still accept payment and fees exist. And then at our second meeting in July, which just for this first year is we're kicking it off, taking a little bit longer. Having a meeting where we can make sure that at least the chairs and members of all the committees that had fees have a chance to weigh in. And offer their feedback and thoughts and potentially at that point ahead of August, when I think some of the TOP and B fees would kick in. You know, getting them there. I, I think that. Am I, am I making sense? I feel like I'm talking too much.
Makes sense to me.
The TOPMB. Um, the new fee for.
Special user permit.
Yes, uh, that might kick in anytime. Because. Well, one doesn't know. Um, I think it's the result of previous experience where. Somebody suddenly caught a big tuna and wanted to, to bring it into the wharf. Um, but they were not a, a licensed commercial fisherman. So I suppose that could happen any, any day between now and August first, but I think everything else is on a, a pretty regular calendar schedule. Just a comment.
Thank you.
I think we need time to. Review what's here, hear from the various committees about their recommendations. And then have a public hearing, well, make a recommend, make our tentative uh, chart. And then have a hearing on that, public hearing on that and then vote. When, remind, I, go back through again, Tyler. This schedule that you're proposing.
So what I'm thinking is today, we have this draft fee schedule in front of us. Next week, when we have our meeting on the twenty fifth, we would adopt this tentative or, you know, however the word we need to use. But adopt it through our second meeting in July.
As an interim, as an interim.
Inter, that is the word that is escaping me, but an interim fee schedule. And then at our first meeting in July, you know, if the board. Yeah, at the second meeting in July, the board would have a public hearing. And at that point, you know, we would want to make sure if there are fees that we're looking to change, that we have that discussion. So we can have that public hearing, so we can get this over the finish line. And then come next year. We won't be in an interim basis where we have this staggered period because that fee schedule will already exist.
And I'm sure the chairs of whatever boards will let us know if they aren't, if they want to change something.
Exactly.
Coming up. That's the only, I don't think anything really, the only ones that ever really been mentioned a lot are the mooring fees and stuff like that.
Right.
So that would be our July twenty three meeting, is that correct?
And now that we're locked in on the second and fourth, yes, it is the twenty third.
So when, so your plan to update this is when? When would you like input? Like I, you know, like if I wanted to say, yeah, we really ought to change this to blah, 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 when.
I would say, I would say board members should probably try to get their input on what they think for changes to me by that first meeting in July. So we can have it incorporated as a draft to be adopted at the second one pending feedback.
And we should, we should communicate with committee chairs um, to ask them. Uh, de- depending on when they're. See, most, all, three of my. see, most, all three of my committees meet the second week of the month. So they will meet before the twenty third. And I guess everybody would have a chance to meet before the twenty third. But we should let them know right away that they have this opportunity to to make suggestions. And give them the date of the hearing and the vote.
Absolutely. And what I, what I can do is I can get that out to committee chairs. I'd also encourage our liaisons and touching bases, you know, some of the liaisons have changed. Remind folks of this as well, because I've learned that sometimes it takes a few broads, especially in the summer months to get things going.
The beauty of this though is that if if they don't, if it doesn't change right off, it's nothing that they can do it in another two months or three months or whatever, you know, we so we, we're not stuck on it now. So we do have that little bit of leeway.
Right, provided we meet the notice and so on. And if we discover, you know, for instance, I personally and Mary and now we're in the weeds a little bit, but I've noticed over the last year, the number of folks coming in for notary services at town office has increased. And on the one hand, I think that's a great service we can provide to our residents. On the other hand, that's time that you're pulling Mary or myself away from another job. The town of Topsy charges five dollars for a notary fee, you know, so there are things, I use that as the example because there were things that could come up over the course of the year that perhaps we haven't thought of that we do. So, spot on.
Right. I agree. I think we do need to look at some of those things because time away takes you from the report that you want to do, all those projects, and that can add up. It's a nice service to have. One of the goals that Bronwyn, back to your point about goals, a couple of years ago, you and Mary had a meeting with all of us chairs of committees, remember? So, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's too soon to have that meeting again, but it might not be, you know, in the fall, maybe that's a good goal for us to have to, to, to look to that as a, as a board trying to organize that again. And I'd be happy to, to help do that if we agree that it makes sense to try that again this fall or, you know, maybe next fall.
I think it makes sense to do it annually.
I agree.
And I suppose because there are changes and, and also because not everyone was, was present at that first time. And some policies or may change, issues may arise. Plus, I think it would be, just be good for, part of the reason we did that was to try and get committee chairs to communicate with each other. So that there wasn't duplication of effort or competition or not understanding the, the issues that made a committee respond in a certain way to a project of another committee. And to co, to generally foster cooperative action between committees where appropriate. So yeah, I think, I think it would be good to plan to do that again. And realistically, it's not likely to get everybody together over the summer.
Perhaps we could look at October. And again, I'm happy to help try to coordinate that to the extent that that's needed.
Perfect. Sounds good.
So were there any other thoughts on fee schedule now? I just think it's good that we're all on the same page on a process. And again, I just stressed next week, we're going to adopt this on an interim basis. Our meeting, our first meeting in July, which I believe is the eleventh. If board members have specific changes they'd like to see incorporated, bring them. So when we get good information out, we'll touch base with the chairs beforehand. But on that second pass, they have a document that when they're coming into public hearing, they're responding to what we have there. So perfect.
So will you, Tyler, will you and Mary then make recommendations on fees for the town office, FOA requests and photocopies and notary and anything else that has come along? So next time we'll have some numbers in those places.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Perfect. And so the next item of old business is seeking approval to allow the town administrator to purchase an owl to improve the conducive-ness of hybrid meetings with ARCA funds as, as dedicated by town meeting.
I'd move to approve.
Will this be a snowy owl?
This will be a gray digital owl.
Gray, gray, right? I, I moved to approve Tyler's acquisition on our behalf of an owl and related equipment to improve the communication efficiency of these meetings.
Second.
And three to oh, but as you're voting, just to clarify on the related equipment, does that include the expansion mic? That would be very helpful when we do public hearings.
Yes.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure for the record that
And the, and the computer, and I agree. I mean, I just bought ten computers for my office. That's the right range, I think, then, you know, eight hundred to a thousand, you know, that, that we just purchased Dell's.
And the good news is that with July fourth coming up, we will actually potentially be able to look at some of the Independence Day sales. The laptop we purchased for me as administrator, we bought on one of the sales to maximize. So perfect. So that includes the computer. So this whole thing will be upgraded. And the budget from town meeting was up to three thousand, but obviously we want to save any pennies we can. Thank you so much. All right. And jumping into new business, there was a request from the Georgetown Community Center to close the Old Schoolhouse Road on July fourth for a portion of the day for a July fourth parade. Mary, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, I can. The community center board of directors is requesting that the select board allow them to make Old Schoolhouse Road from the church on that, down that side, one way. Headed outward. So you go around the circle and head out. And then we do that at about one thirty when we close, when we start lining up the vehicle or the floats and vehicles for the parade. We've already obviously talked with the fire department. They'll be part of it as well as, as some staging. And, you know, we've got to call into the sheriff's department and all that stuff. Even if the sheriff can't participate in the parade, we always call them to let them know that there will be a lot of traffic on that roadway. If they need to get, you know, so and then, so we've asked for them for the board to allow us to close it down at about one thirty. And then we would imagine that by four o'clock it'll be back open. The, the plan is to have the parade and then to have folks back at the community center for the normal hot dogs and chips and, and drinks. And then everybody will go home. So, but we have kind of like a new group working on it this year. The community center board is just tired of trying to do it all themselves. So we've kind of split off and there's a group of five or six of us that are taking on the parade. And we had a meeting the other day and it was very, I think it was very successful. We've got a bunch of flows in the works. So we're hopeful. We had a lot of flack last year when we did not have a parade. So
We appreciate y'all trying to reactivate it. And I would, I would move to approve the GCC's request to close the road on Fourth of July that afternoon.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. That was three to zero. And the next item of business was seeking approval for a memorandum of understanding with Georgetown Central School for the Adventure Trail. With suggested changes incorporated by the Conservation Commission. And I would just note that the Conservation Commission had asked that we include the storybook trail. And there had been some concern in years past about the inspection being done on an annual basis. And so the Conservation Commission is requesting to help alleviate those concerns that the inspection report be kept on file both at the school and the town office, which as an MOU between two parties makes perfect sense to me. And again, they wanted to make sure that the Georgetown Central School covers the cost of any course structures and the storybook trail maintenance, just to make that abundantly clear. I included in your packet, the document with the revisions and
Tyler, should it not say in the second bullet will be inspected on an annual basis and the inspection report will be kept on file? Because it's not, I mean, it's a report. It's not the inspection. That's just an English teacher's comment.
Yep. I think that makes sense. And before we depart, I can add that word in and print in the other room.
Tyler, a couple of questions. So the storybook trail for, for those who may not be aware is, is behind the school. And so and, and my, my question, my two questions related to that are have the, I know the Conservation Commission has addressed this. Has the school seen, seen this revised and addressed this revised MOU?
Not today.
Okay, not today. Okay. Because there may, just what I know about the program, then they will likely have to make at least one revision on their end. Not related to the inspection, because I know nothing about whether or not that will, you know, I doubt that that's going to be the revision, but it's related to one of the, about the guidance curriculum. And I just don't know if they're still doing that during guidance.
Would it make sense to table this and give me some time to bring it back to our next meeting and we will still be ahead of the July one deadline, which I have been informed historically the town has never met, but it is a goal to strive towards.
I mean, my understanding, and I, I, yes, I, I do think so because the adventure course, my understanding may be actually getting removed.
Right. I thought that, I thought that's
So, so you know, we, I think we just want to know that before we go further.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, oh, and there it is. The adventure course is being removed. So that's from one of us school board members.
So definitely there, sounds like there are going to need to be revisions. So tabling this would make sense.
So I move to table this action item until you have more information and can bring it back to us for revised consideration.
I'll second that.
In favor.
Perfect. And I will work to get that back expeditiously. And the last item of business is a long series of items of business and their appointments are for town officials and committees. The way I would try to approach this tonight, if the board is amenable, is to move the slate of annual appointments. And then take up each committee by committee. That way, if there are any questions, comments, discussion, we can do so. But ultimately that is the decision of this board.
I move to, to confirm the list of annual appointments as presented.
Second.
All right. And that's Aria as presenter. All in favor? All right. Three to zero. Thank you. The registrar was taken out at the beginning of our meeting, yes. Because she already is the registrar. All right. And so on, committee appointments, we have two vacancies on the Board of Appeals. As of right now, Garrett Corbin has resigned. He's taken the role of town manager in the Carabassett Valley and we're very excited for him. And Aria has been elected to the select board and will be continuing as their liaison. So as of tonight, there isn't anybody to appoint. I will stress, or not stress, but I have heard from Rufus Brown today. He submitted an application, cover letter, et cetera, which I forwarded on to Bronwyn. I verbally heard of another person who may be interested, but has not submitted an application to date.
Great. We have the two vacancies and, you know, when there is a hearing like there was a few years ago, it's important to have a full board.
There, are there also alternate positions on the appeal board? And do we have any, anyone in that role at this time?
I'm not aware that we do Bronwyn. It was Garrett, Peter Stevens, me.
I thought Pam Ginnell at one time was an alternate and then promoted to the, the planning board? Or she was a full member?
Pam was on the Board of Appeals as
As an alternate.
As an alternate and then was promoted to be an alternate at the planning board.
So I think there may, we may have an alternate vacancy as well. And it would probably be good to fill those three positions if we can.
Right. Yeah.
All right. And in regards to the Conservation Commission, Jessica Weller is up for reappointment as a three-year member. And Cheryl Swift has been, has come forward as a potential appointment as an associate member for a three-year term.
I move to make both of those appointments.
Second.
All in favor? Perfect. Three to zero. And on the Financial Advisory Committee, I have spoken with Judy Teller and she is enthusiastic to be reappointed to the FAC.
I'd move for Judy's reappointment.
I'll second it.
Second. Whichever.
All in favor?
Trying to find the second page here.
And on the Harbor Committee, Peter Cruz is up for reappointment as a member. I spoke with Peter this afternoon while he is in Greece. I caught him at bedtime. And he is very eager to be back on the Harbor Committee. And we also have David Teller up for reappointment as an alternate member. And while speaking with Judy, I spoke with David. And he is excited to be back on that committee as well.
That's how you get business done.
So i- is Peter sailing in Greece?
Uh, my understanding, they were doing nautical things and yes, and he was, will be home in a few weeks.
Wow. Okay. I move to reappoint both of them.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Three to zero. And on the planning board, we have Bob Trabona up for a five-year term as a member to the planning board.
I'd move to reappoint.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. That was three to zero. All right. And on the Recreation Committee, we have three up for nomination tonight. And we did go back to our tracker to confirm that this year there are three seats up. On the other two years in the three-year cycle, there were two seats, two seats and three seats. And we have Gary Panki up for reappointment as a three-year term, Judy Teller on a three-year term. And Susan Taylor, who applied and wants to be appointed to a three-year term. I've spoken with Gary and Judy and they both are eager to continue their work.
I'd move to reappoint and appoint the three.
Second.
All in favor? Perfect. And next up is the Shellfish Conservation Commission. And we have a reappointment of Charles Buster Moore for a three-year term. I spoke with Buster this afternoon and he also is eager to continue his work.
Move to appoint.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And by the start of the meeting, we did not have the verbal confirmation from Karen that she was looking to be reappointed. However, I
I, yeah, I, I move to reappoint Karen.
Perfect.
Subject to her confirmation of willingness to serve.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. And that is three to zero. All right. And with that, I believe we have completed all of the business on the agenda that was before us. And I would turn this back over to John for public comment.
Is there any public comment? See any? We've got, I don't see any public comment. So we don't have any executive session. So I guess we're entertaining.
Sorry.
Thank you. So be it. Thank you.
Good night all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.